This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. I don't think your mic is on.
Yes. Steven Spina?
Here.
Jody Wilson? Lance Smith? Charles Proctor?
Here.
Ken Burris?
Here.
William Poe?
Here.
Matthew Mack?
Here.
First items of the conference. Mr. Burris, we have anyone signed up for comments here?
None has signed up for comments.
Yeah, the first treaty, resolution number 828-24.
Yeah. First treaty of resolution number 828-24, resolution of the city, set the community redevelopment agency adopted a proposed budget for the CRA this year.
Is this in the public hearing? Is this in the public hearing?
No.
Anybody have any questions about the budget?
I think we've gone over. That is correct. According to Florida statutes, the CRA's budget must be passed by resolution and forwarded on to the City Council for inclusion in the overall city budget.
All in favor, say aye. I'll vote in the name. Item 2.2, 24, body of engagement letter, with the extension of the CRA's budget.
Again, this is our annual audit must be done according to state statute. Finance is recommending the same audit team, DG Perry, as before. Staff concludes. Okay. So what we've been waiting for is the master park plan review, phase one. Tonight, we have Kristen Claiborne here with GAI Communities Solutions Group? Yeah. And their team has been the one that has led the effort for the Parks and Rec Master Plan, along with the companies you see at the bottom of your presentation. RRC is the, did the survey. Sports Facility Company and Wanamaker Jensen Architects also did the review of the buildings and the facilities. So I'm going to bring Kristen up. She's going to go through the park plan. If you have any questions, we'll work through those, okay? Thank you.
And just as a reminder, Billy and I have a bet that I can get this done in an hour, so.
She hasn't heard me talk yet. Well, thank you all for having me tonight. It's great to hear that you've been waiting just for me, little old me, this whole time. We're really excited to go over our phase one findings with you. And I want to reiterate that this phase one is findings. Our task at hand, this is really close to me, our task at hand was not to come to any conclusions tonight. That's for the next phase, but I look forward to getting your input as I go along. Feel free to stop and ask me questions. I do probably have close to an hour of content with some built-in back-and-forth questions, so feel free to ask. All right, let's see. Yeah, but I'm not sure the clicker's working. So you want me to tell you when to click? Okay, that's the, all right. So our agenda, I'm going to give you an overview of the planning process to date and a status update on everything we found. I'm going to give you a really quick overview of the survey results that RRC conducted. When we get to that section, I'll tell you a little bit more about who RRC is. I understand that you all do have a full copy of the survey report. If you have any in-depth questions for them, especially about methodology, I will make an attempt to answer with, answer them, but also RRC is more than happy as the statisticians to have one-on-one conversations, to make sure everyone's comfortable and understands the survey methodology. We're going to talk a little bit about the key issues that identify, that we identified through the entire planning process and how those will play into the next steps. Next slide, please. Oh, see, you're already reading my mind. It's amazing. So the purpose of your master plan is really threefold. The first step is to understand the needs and opportunities in the city. We really want to make a concerted effort to make sure that we talk to members of the public in multiple ways, so we can understand where they're coming from, what their priorities are, and what their vision is for the future. So the next step becomes the blueprint of, for the future of parks and recreation in Zephyr Hills, what that means and how much that's going to cost. And then ultimately, especially since this is a highly residential community, to talk about what's going to improve the quality of life for the residents of Zephyr Hills. So phase one, Gail had mentioned, is what we've been working on now. We had some kickoff meeting with staff. We also did the existing conditions analysis, and I'm going to take you all on a little park tour this evening as part of our existing conditions analysis, where we also worked with our partners, Wanamaker Jensen Architects, as well as sports facilities companies, to look at market research for parks and recreation in the area, as well as, I already mentioned, doing the survey, and then inventory and evaluation of each of them. We also did public input. We had some in-person public input meetings as part of the process, but also that statistically valid survey, which is the report that you all saw from RRC. The reason why that's really important for us is it engages the people who are disengaged, who may not be interacting with a park in Zephyr Hills on a daily basis, because everybody who lives in the city has the equal opportunity to receive the survey. And all of that culminated with the key issues matrix, which is what I'll talk about at the end of the presentation. So existing conditions analysis, we went through all the documents. You all have some exciting plans going forward right now with Zephyr Park and Hercules. We worked through those. We studied your CRA plan, studied the city's comprehensive plan. All of that plays into a parks and recreation system plan. Look at the demographics and population, not only what's in the city right now, but what's projected to take place, as well as right outside the city limits, and how that is influencing parks and recreation, because we all know that people who live in unincorporated Pasco County are influencing users on your parks and recreation system. They don't see jurisdictional boundaries like you all do. The market research that SFC did on the demand in the area, as well as the inventory and evaluation. So when we do the inventory in the field, we use our iPads and our phones, and we do all of this in GIS, and this is actually a really fun process for us, because we get to go to all of the parks and we evaluate each piece of equipment individually. We do a ranking system. It's a very simple ranking system of one to three. So we go through, we identify what we're looking at, whether it be a playground, a basketball court, a ball field, whatever it may be. We identify that, we identify the condition, and that allows us to build a CIP plan when we come to the next step. So one of the most exciting things for Zephyr Hill staff has been the dashboard that we have left behind with them. So this is just a little sneak peek overall of what the dashboard looks like. We use that rating system, a three, and if we rate something as a three, it's generally new and exceeds the user's expectations. If something is a two, it's meeting its intended purpose. It's safe, it's clean, and it's in good repair. And then a one is something that's getting past its useful life, or probably getting to the point where it would need to be replaced. It's important to think about when we are rating these things. We're rating Zephyr Hills against itself. We're not rating you against other cities in the area. We're not rating you against Pasco County. That's important, because we want your users to have an equitable experience in Zephyr Hills Park, no parks, no matter which park they're at. So a playground might be different between one park or another, but as long as they're both a two or a three, then you're providing some equitable level of service. So that's what we get into when we start to build your CIP plan. The dashboard is interactive for city staff. It's all built in GIS. They can zoom into an individual park. They can look at a piece of equipment. We've photographed it. All of the photographs are tied to latitude and longitude, with the idea that as the city replaces equipment or adds future park amenities, future parks even into the overall system, they can update the GIS dashboard, and you never have to go back and do a full inventory again. So it's a really great tool for the city. It gives them an at-a-glance of the condition. They can zoom in and out to individual parks. So that's been really helpful. Overall, 14 parks in Zephyr Hills. We inventoried 29 active amenities. Those would be things like ball fields, courts, playgrounds, 16 passive amenities, 20 buildings, 16 sports courts, two sports fields, and 123 furnishings. So did you all know you had that many benches in your parks in Zephyr Hills? There's your trivia for the evening. So just a little overview of your park system. Here's your 14 parks. One of the things that's important as we are going to move into phase two is you do have 14 parks, which is great. We'll talk a little bit about your comprehensive plan and your acreage-based level of service, but when you look at the geographic distribution of parks in Zephyr Hills, you can see that the northern part of the city has what we call a park desert. I know, it sounds kind of funny, but a park desert. So even though you're looking at having enough acreage in the city, there are challenges for close-to-home parks, which are what we call neighborhood parks, that people can walk to after work, after school, play a pickup game of hoops, or run around the playground, or just take a walk. So in addition to acreage, we are looking at the condition, but we're also looking at the geographic distribution of parks and how it's serving the residential areas of the city. So here's your promised park tour. I'm going to very quickly run through all 14, just to get you all a little bit familiarized, because even though I've been in all of the parks, sometimes I forget the difference between them. So where you're looking at existing conditions, we put in a little chart, so you can get an idea of what each of the 14 parks looks like today. So you'll see the rankings here. Everything in Clock Plaza is meeting its intended purpose, or it's ranked a two. And if you all have questions on any of these as I go, please let me know. Depot Park, you can see its location. Some of its active amenities are falling below, probably past their useful life, but in general, the park is, you know, on the good to, close to needing improvement. Gunner Park, again, good to, some active amenities needs improvements. And I do want to mention, when the city staff dives into the dashboard, they could actually go in amenity by amenity and see what we are ranking, which is pulling it down below meets, meets its intended purpose, bringing that active amenities down. Hercules Park doesn't have a ranking, because it's not developed yet, so we've, just as I mentioned, we are pulling in the other studies that have been done. So this is your site plan currently for Hercules Park. Obviously, we don't rank anything, but as Hercules comes online, and the playground, the playfields, the pavilions, the walking trails and all of that, that would be added to the GIS database, and it would be a three, because it's new. Cruisin' Park, one of your more active parks. It's getting to the point where it's going to need some love over the years. Lincoln Heights and Ellis Herald, again, your signage there is really good, so that's, that's great. And then your other amenities are meeting their intended purpose. So this is important when you're looking at these, is that pickleball or tennis? I actually don't remember.
That's not in there.
Oh. I'm sorry about that. We mixed up the photos. Sorry about that. But just to, when we get to talking about this, if a park. The tennis center. Okay, yeah, we'll pull that out. I'm sorry about that, that we didn't catch that when we went and did the, yeah. We look at it so much, we don't necessarily catch it, but clearly we can see on the aerial that there are no tennis courts at this park. But what we would do is we're pulling down rankings, because the amenities at this park are ranking, you know, in the meets, it meets its intended purpose. When we build the capital improvement plan, this park would fall further down the list for capital investments. Shepherd Park, this really has the opportunity on 301 to be a gateway to the city. The Girl Scouts are actively using these metal buildings there, if you all weren't aware. There is the area where it says main entrance, I can use the laser pointer here, but this is very low here and does, does stay wet, but this park to us has a lot of opportunities, especially with the CRA and the CRA plans moving forward. Transplant Park, a small park. Signage could use some improvement, but generally is in good condition. Veterans Memorial Park, again, coming to the point where it's passing its useful life. The YMCA, we're not going to dive in really heavily to the YMCA. Of course, the city does own the YMCA, has a user agreement with the Y right now. The Y is actually, according to the current user agreement, is responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of the building. So that's something we're going to probably explore a little bit more in phase two, and how this looks coupled with the future of recreation in Zephyr Hills. Zephyr Hills Community Park. Zephyr Park, again, we did go through and rank, but you all do have a master plan for this site. One of the things with Zephyr Park that we'll talk a little bit more in depth about is the condition of Alice Hall and what that might look like moving forward. The golf course isn't inventoried, but because the city owns it, we do, we do include it in the acreage of the parkland. Okay, so as promised, there's your tour of the parks, and now we're going to move to Alice Hall. Let me just see. Good, Arturo is with me. Arturo is with Wanamaker Jensen Architects. So if you have any questions about their assessment of Alice Hall, or some of the things that we saw that I mentioned at the beginning, it wasn't our job yet to come up with recommendations, but to present existing conditions, and Alice Hall is past its useful life. I'm sure that doesn't surprise anyone. Part of what Wanamaker Jensen's responsibility was, is they are doing, they do a lot of recreation architecture in the state of Florida. So what has, what helps us make this determination is, are we getting to the point where renovating a building is not worth the money that it would take to start fresh and to start new? So some of the issues with Alice Hall is it's not ADA accessible. Many of its building systems are beyond the life, it's their lifespan. There is no natural light going into there. Really, there is a big, large room that doesn't subdivide easily. It's really not set up for recreation programs and the demand for recreation programs that we heard as part of the, as part of the inventory process. Another challenge with Alice Hall and its location at Zephyr Park is that if you get a really active evening or special event at Zephyr Hall, and you, excuse me, at Zephyr Park, and we're trying to run a wedding or a baby shower, another crowded event out of Alice Hall, there's some challenges with that and where it's located. So Alice Hall is probably not going to be something that, in the future vision for Zephyr Hills Recreation, is going to be useful, but there, we wouldn't, on the flip side of that, want to make any recommendation to make changes to Alice Hall until another provision, another building was in place to, to replace that space. Any questions on Alice Hall for me or for Arturo, who's here with me? Okay. Absolutely. You do, for sure, and you'll, there's a lot of demand for recreation programs in Zephyr Hills, and Alice Hall is just not going to cut it. Yep, absolutely. We did also do an assessment of the YMCA, again, because the city owns the building. This is something else that's going to be, as we move into phase two. Guess it's not going to come. As we move into phase two, that we will be considering as part of this. The Y does need some ADA improvements. There's evidence of some water intrusion. The restrooms are getting to be, again, past their useful life, and it does need some general maintenance and upgrades. So the YMCA isn't a solution for all the recreation demand in Zephyr Hills, but it's something that, it could very much be a complement to what the future looks like for recreation in Zephyr Hills. So some of the documents that we looked at, again, we've looked at the site plans that are currently in process for your existing parks. Gail and I have been back and forth quite a bit on those over the past couple of months, and making sure that those are coming to the forefront. And what an exciting time for you all to be getting to a new park and renovation to really the heart of your community. So we're excited to see that come forward. But you do have other really great plans, the CRA plan, your sidewalks, your sidewalk plans and all that, that's really going to be instrumental in looking at the connectivity to parks, how people are safely accessing them outside of their cars. So I'm going to just really quickly go through the level of service. This is your comprehensive plan. So every, of course, every city, county in Florida has a comprehensive plan, and the recreation open space element prescribes level of service. But what doesn't matter is how level of service is calculated. It doesn't matter to the state of Florida how you calculate it, as long as you calculate it in a way that makes sense for you. So right now, Zephyr Hills calculates your level of service as four acres per thousand, and that's great. A lot of, a lot of cities are still sticking with the acreage per thousand, but the acreage per thousand doesn't address the quality of those acreage, 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 and how it is serving the community, how the community is able to access them. In our largely residential communities like in Zephyr Hills, we know how important close-to-home parks are for the residents. And so especially when we're talking about the northern area of the city, they don't have any parks anywhere near them. So while it might be 2050 before you have a deficiency in park acreage, this is pulling in some acreage for facilities that might not make sense to count into your acreage-based level of service, like the YMCA. Or if we are going to count the acreage surrounding the Y, how can we activate the acreage at the Y on the outside of the building to make a public park that's in addition to the building? Can we add a playground? I know the Y right now has like a gaga pit or something out there off to the side, but how can we activate that space? Our first inclination is not like land acquisition, land acquisition, you must go buy more land. It's how can we activate parcels that the city already owns? How can we take advantage of other city-owned property to improve level of service? The tennis center is also included in this, and because that's really an economic development parcel as opposed to a true public park, that's something that also would be considered. Perhaps that's not best in counting towards your acreage and how you're serving your residents. So all of that is what we'll flush out with city staff as we move into phase two, and what this, what this really means, because it's not a good picture of how you are delivering and how you're capable of delivering parks and recreation to the city. Okay, so market research. This was our partner on the project, Sports Facilities Advisory. Sports Facilities Advisory works, again, actually, they work nationally, but they are headquartered in Clearwater, and they are truly specialists in recreation programming. So they have looked within Zephyr Hills and then within a market area of Zephyr Hills, and what other Pasco County, what other cities in the area, Dade City are providing, that what we would call influencing amenities for Zephyr Hills residents. Again, because Zeph, residents don't necessarily see these imaginary boundary lines that we see, as Zephyr Hills, it has a mission to provide service to your, to your residents. So indoor courts were something that were a priority, and when you think about indoor courts, this doesn't necessarily mean basketball courts, although a lot of, when we think of indoor courts, we think of multipurpose space where it could, you could have holes for plates for volleyball, pickleball, tennis, volleyball, like the opportunities are truly endless. And in Florida, that's really important, because guess what? It's almost October and it's still too hot to play outside. I mean, it really is. So the provision of multipurpose indoor space is important. And how that interfaces with the Y and the basketball court at the Y is something that, now that we know that there's a demand for it, is something that we'll look at as part of phase two. Indoor court space, that large multipurpose space is also really good for summer camp programs, and that was something that we heard is, is important. So within 30 minutes of Zephyr Hills, we're looking at almost a half a million people, which is really, it's hard to imagine, but Pasco County is growing, and of course, that does dip into Hillsborough County a little bit, too. But a new facility, but specifically catered to Zephyr Hills and rightsized for Zephyr Hills is important. The side conversation to that is how is Pasco County Parks and Recreation providing regional park services to the city of Zephyr Hills? So we'll be talking with them also. So when we looked at the Zephyr Hills market, we looked at 15 minutes, just basically dropping a pin in the middle of the city, and look at the demographic analysis, and we are looking at population growth. You all know that. It's about the 6% range in the next five years, so we know that there's going to be some growth that's moving forward. The household median income in Zephyr Hills matches the national median after adjusting, median after adjusting for cost of living. The median age in Zephyr Hills does trend a little bit higher with seniors and younger families. However, that is changing. It's changing everywhere, but it's changing very much over on the East Coast here. And then a low volume of fitness, YMCA and community center and indoor court facilities currently operate in Zephyr Hills and in your market area. People are typically willing to drive 15 to 30 minutes for those types of facilities, so you are positioned well here for that moving into the future, because unless you're at the peak of traffic, you really can get anywhere in the city in that period of time. Any questions on that? I know that's kind of a lot of data. All right, so now I'm going to run into the, run over the public input process. So we did three things. We had the statistically valid survey that, you have the full survey report I mentioned from RRC. We had a public workshop, and then that culminated in the key issues matrix, which I'll get to at the end of the presentation. So our public workshop, gone are the days of us doing public workshops where I stand in front of a room and talk at a podium and present to the audience to listen to me, entertain them for 30 minutes or an hour to get their feedback. We had an open house right here in this room. We had different stations. We had three different areas set up around the room, where we had targeted conversations with the people who came to participate. This is a much better way for getting candid input, for us to have conversations, to truly hear from the public, and then no one has to get up and speak in front of an audience. Of course, we're happy to do it, but the public doesn't necessarily like to do that. The other advantage to this is people can come and go as they please. If they don't want to stay for the entire two hours that the meeting was advertised for, they can very easily get in and out in 15 or 20 minutes. So one of the stations was Live, Work, and Play. This is where we actually set up a computer, and we work with people who come to the meeting to identify where they live, where they work, and where they hang out. So we can do a mapping exercise to look at, to develop heat maps on where people are living versus where they're going to recreate, where people are working versus where they're living, and we can get an idea of how the geographic distribution is going throughout the city, and how far outside the city people are going to play and to work. We also had a write-on-me map. This is where we roll out a big map of the city with all the city parks on it. You can see here, we've got the, we've got the map of the city laid out, and we encourage people to put post notes on it, to write on it if there's a connection that they'd like to see between parks, between their home and a park. They can do that. But we also create and print out what's called a map book, very similar to the tour of the parks I just gave you all, of course, without the wrong tennis court on the, on the wrong park. We do print out a map book, so again, most people don't know what 14 parks are in Zephyr Hills, so they can dive in more individually to each of the parks. So that gives them a much more intimate understanding of each of the parks here. We also had a priority voting, where we give everybody four dots, and we force them to make decisions on what their highest priorities are for the future of Zephyr Hills. It's a very non-scientific way to get the idea, but you can see that new, in this meeting, new gymnasium, renovating the existing parks, shade, these are all things that came out as high priorities for the participants. And then finally, working with our partners at Sports Facilities Advisory, we had programs and operations, so they, people could identify what kinds of programs were most important to them and how they would like those prioritized. That information and that data that's collected as part of this process will feed in. will feed into what does the new community center look like size wise? Do we need 10,000 square feet? Do we need 15,000 or 20,000 square feet? So we have an idea of what the public wanted, both through the public input process, but also the survey of what types of programs they want. So we can jump right into an understanding of how that translates to square footage. So some of the key takeaways for parks, as no surprise, I'm sure, Zephyr Park is the most used park. People would like to see an increased connectivity and opportunities for biking, biking, biking and walking is biking, biking and walking in the city. Add special events to activate your current parks more. Putting on special events is a really great way to build community, but it does take staff to put on special events. They require a lot of planning. Y'all have a great partnership with Main Street here and are doing some special events, but especially in these residential communities. Everything from movies on the lawn to food truck nights, those are all things that are really have a big impact and low cost to activating the city. So I don't want you all to think that you've got to have concerts in the park once a month to get started, just small community events. Adding a park in the north side of the city, we've already mentioned that. Additional sports courts. When we talk about sports courts, these are hard surface courts. It's not necessarily prescriptive of what kind of courts. It could be basketball, it could be tennis, it could be pickleball, it could be paddle, it could be any of those. And that's generally up to the neighborhood where the park is located. Top priorities are renovate your existing parks, a new gym, and then more shade. More shade is a, is a great low cost item. So we like, we're very encouraged when we hear things that are much less expensive, but can make big impact. So key takeaways for recreation. The primary desires are outdoor events and festivals, indoor dance theater. Again, that lends itself to indoor multipurpose space, not necessarily a indoor stadium seating theater. But if you can think back to those eighties cafeteriums, like I grew up with the cafeteria and the auditorium. There are more modern ways to accomplish that now. Disc golf, rectangle field athletic programs. That's something that is a conversation with Pasco County. Y'all don't, when we say rectangle fields, those are like lacrosse, football, soccer. You all don't have the land here to truly expand your rectangles for games and tournaments. So that conversation lends us to one with Pasco County and the regional needs. Team court sport programs. And then the top three spending priorities out of these dots that we did were outdoor passive recreation, outdoor athletic, and then aquatics. Take what you want with aquatics. I'm going to make no more comments on that. Okay, so the key findings of the survey, these next couple of slides, these are specific to the RRC survey. The RRC survey had two, two ways that you could respond. The first one was the statistically valid survey. That was a survey that RRC purchases a mailing list and anyone who lives in the city of Zephyr Hills has an equal opportunity to receive that survey. So the, there's a margin of error with that, a statistical margin of error that in this one, it was around 5% and that's the target they look at. It is election season, so everybody's used to hearing margins of error. So we are very comfortable with the margin of error on this survey. With that, they also had an online version of the survey. So if you heard from a neighbor that they got a survey in the mail and their neighbor didn't, there was the opportunity to participate online. So we do have, the survey report that you have does report both. A lot of them trended the same, but with the online survey, you can generally see trends of when one specific user group gets a hold of the survey and sends it out to everybody else. And then all of a sudden you have a skewed need for aquatics. Or in one community, we saw, we had about 1,000 people fill out an online survey and almost 300 of them wanted lawn bowling. We know there's not 300 people who want lawn bowling that was not here. But that's part of the reason why the statistically valid survey is so important. It's also weighted to match the demographics of Zephyr Hills. So we make sure that no one group of men versus women, age are over, underrepresented. So the two samples were collected. The responses from the open link survey are similar to the invite. Again, this means that there's a general consensus between the two. The survey report goes into it and it does differentiate in all the graphs between online and the statistically valid survey. They're presented together, but never mixed as a sample. There are moderate levels of familiarity with parks and the facilities provided by Zephyr Hills. So y'all have great public information here. It's always interesting for us. We always ask this question on how they get information. Word of mouth generally comes up, but people do want to hear about it through social media. And it's like, well, then why aren't you engaging with the city's social media sites? So there is opportunity for growing this. And part of the way that you grow the word of mouth is again, by having your close to home parks where neighbors are congregating after, after school, after work hours type of thing. We already know that Zephyr Park is the most frequently used park. Nature, bike and multi-use trails are the most frequently used amenity. It's also the most in-demand amenity. The reason for this, and we see this everywhere we work in Florida, is that people can do that without pre-planning. You don't have to necessarily pack your sunscreen and pack your cooler and get ready to leave. You can just decide to go for a walk. Walking is the number one form of exercise for people. So this, this comes as no surprise. Respondents generally live close to their most visited park. And this does further reinforce for us that we do need to make sure that everybody has a close to home, safe access to a park. We don't want to build parking lots the size that would be needed in neighborhood parks. We really want to encourage people to be able to walk there into 10, 10 to 15 minute timeframe at the most. So we actually will study that as part of phase two using actual park entrances, actual sidewalk networks to look at how people are able to get to parks on foot. And again, we talked a little bit about nature parks, multi-use trails and those are the most important to the community. The top highest future priorities for the invite sample, the invite sample is the statistically valid sample. So that's using that interchangeably, making improvements to existing parks or facilities and then adding more senior programs. So again, the survey is reflective of the people who responded now. And we know that the demographics currently in Zephyr Hills do tend to trend a little bit older. So that's to be expected, but we want to make sure that we're looking at the, you know, looking at the 10-year horizon and who's going to be living here in the next couple of years as well. We do always ask a question about funding. This is something that is always interesting to hear how people feel about this. Right now, in the day that the survey was filled out, there was a slightly greater opposition to a city tax dedicated to recreation programs over half the invite sample. That's a tough question to ask. RRC has the right wording for that to make sure that it's not leading. It's a tom, it's a tough question to ask and expect people to respond positively when they're responding to something that they're not looking at a picture and saying, would you pay for this building? Would you voluntarily tax yourself to have access to this recreation center in Zephyr Hills? Which is an entirely different question. So digging further into that, if there were a tax increase, 30% of the invite, invite samples said they'd be willing to pay an additional dollar to $50 annually. So that's actually not too bad, especially given that we're in an election year. If, if it were 15%, it would be a little bit more concerning. That's just something to file away for the future. When asked how they would allocate a hypothetical $100 across various facilities, service or program improvements, the largest sale, the largest share of that budget went to hiking trails and parks. Part of the reason we asked that question is to balance the question that we asked in the public input, the live public input, where they were able to put green dots on how they would, how they'd like to spend their money. So overall, Zephyr Hills communication was rated as somewhat effective with an average of 2.6 out of 5 for the invite sample. There's a lot of opportunity for improvement with that, but that's also something to be expected when you don't have a parks and rec person who is out there really beating the drum and building that community. So your PIO is doing a really nice job. They worked really hard with us to make sure we got the word out about the, about the survey to get people to fill it out. So the preferred method of communication, 30% said email. Again, they want email, but then they don't read email. So there you go, take with that what you will, followed by social media and then text messaging. All right, so step three, getting into the key issues matrix. So what does all of this mean? So what we do is we take all of these, we take everything that we saw in the field, all of your parks and everything that we heard as part of the public input process, and we develop key issues. And this is really where we stop at, at the end of phase one, which is determining how Zephyr Hills looks today and then how can we grow into the future? So as I talk about these, they're actually color coded because the landscape architect who did the presentation for me likes to color code everything. So when we're talking about parks and recreation today, what can we do with what we have? You're going to be looking at that blue color. And then when we think about Zephyr Hills Parks and Recreation in the future, how can we grow into the future? It's more of that green color. So starting off and talking about parks and recreation today, the first key issue is improve walkability and connectivity. Again, this is a finding. Some of these are going to start to sound like recommendations. When we get into phase two, we're going to be working with staff to take each of these headlines, if you will, and develop them into guiding principles. And guiding principles become a statement of how we're going to improve and create a vision for the future. And underneath each of the guiding principles, the recommendations will follow. And recommendations will have either a statement with a cost associated with it or it might just be a statement of something that's aspirational, but doesn't necessarily have a hard capital cost associated with it. So not all of these would, are necessarily things that are, that are going to be bricks and mortar costs for the city. So thinking about improving the walkability and connectivity, looking at ADA accessibility for parking areas between parking lots and amenities, especially as parks get renovated, they getting brought up, having ADA not only meets the minimum level of service for what you might think of as people with physical disabilities, but it also opens up opportunities for moms who might be pushing strollers or for your senior population to be able to walk easier on a stabilized surface. So ADA is just a really good basic level of care, but it also really opens up parks for multiple users. More pedestrian walkways, both to parks and within parks. Parks are a safe place to walk and we want to encourage people to come to parks to walk. Looking at perimeter trails in parks. So if you've got multi-generational users, you can have adults perhaps walking for exercise on a, on a, on a trail that's paved. And then you can also have a good eye onto a sport court or a playground and really increasing opportunities for different ages, different abilities to use parks. Safer crossings into parks from residents and then incorporating more trails and pathways to expand existing parks. The next one is enhancing user experience and comfort. This ties directly back to shade. We heard that shade was really important. It's not necessarily getting any cooler into September and October now. So what can help users feel more comfortable in parks? Feel less of impacts of heat. We think of shade certainly as trees, but there can also be shade structures over playgrounds, over seating, that type of thing. Also, when we're talking about user experiences and comfort, park lighting is really important. And a lot of close to home parks will have dawn to dusk hours. I actually don't remember if all of yours are dawn to dusk. 10:00 PM, which is great. Because in Florida, the best time of year to be outside is in January, February, March, and it's dark at 5:30. So we love the ability for people to safely recreate in lit parks without impacting neighbors during our best time of year. And then improving parking areas to improve the overall comfort and functionality. Next one is communicating offerings. Developing a park system brand. You all have a beautiful brand here for the city with a jump right in and, and your logo. So looking at overall branding for the city to provide better awareness. There's a really big impact on having someone know that they have arrived at a city park through signage, through landscaping. We call it celebrated entry, which is, that's actually a term that's stolen from SEPTED, which stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. But it's the idea that if you are in a public space, you know it's a space that's public owned, publicly owned. It does increase perceptions of safety. It does create a sense of ownership for the normal user. The normal user is the type of people that you want to be in a park. So looking at a system brand is actually a very powerful way to reinforce your park system. Clarifying the park offerings that are currently available to the public. And then again, improve and expand communications via email, social media, and then text messages. But there's no substitute for having a Parks and Recreation person out there who's really helping to communicate what the city has. Maintain and improve existing. This is something that we love. We love when residents embrace their current parks. Everybody feels really great on the day that a ribbon is cut at a new park, but then the city is left with another park that they have to maintain and they have to keep up over the years. So we put a very strong emphasis, especially when you all have 14 parks already. And how are we going to create a level of service that is equitable for users of all parks in the city? So as part of our inventory and building the capital improvement plan, we'll look at replacing furnishings and amenities that are reaching the end of their useful life cycle. Repairing fields, bringing fields up to a condition that can take a little bit more usage. Updating your older playground equipment and the surfacing associated with that, especially when we're talking about accessibility for playground equipment. You'll see a lot of times now playgrounds aren't just for two to 12-year-olds anymore. There are a lot of usage of teenagers using it for exercise, adults using it for exercise. When you see port and plate surfacing, you'll see a lot of boot camps taking place, adult boot camps taking place on the springy surfacing because it's got less impact on joints. So there's a lot of opportunities when you're upgrading surfacings at playgrounds. You don't necessarily have to think of for kids anymore. Implementing your park plan for Zephyr. Improving the park restroom facilities just overall. And then all of everyone's favorite Alice Hall Community Center at this point is non-functional. So what that's going to look like going into the future and serving the needs. So delivering your park service, your park services, adding desired recreational amenities to parks where it's feasible. So we'll be taking a hard look at all of the parks in Zephyr Hills and seeing if we can expand the usages, adding a playground here, adding a shade pavilion there just to make the parks more appealing to all types of users. Adding more neighborhood parks. When we say neighborhood parks, we're talking small parks that are close to home, walkable. And then expanding nature-based recreation amenities and conservation areas where the opportunity presents itself. So we can't create nature, we can't create conservation areas. But if the opportunity comes up for nature-based recreation, taking advantage of that, because we did hear that passive recreation was something that was important. So program offerings, supporting and promoting youth teen, youth and teen programs, especially moving forward as your population tends to trend younger. Support and promote more disability-friendly program offerings. Again, modern facilities are much more welcoming for all ages and all abilities. Provide team sports and athletic programs, team sports to the level that you can in Zephyr Hills, but then also working with Pasco County to provide that in the area and the greater region around Zephyr Hills. Increasing access to aquatics programs. Like Gail giggled that there is the opportu, that we did hear about aquatics, but you do have a pool in Zephyr Hills. And that would be probably a partnership with the wire with Pasco County. Aquatics is never a revenue above, it's never a revenue that recovers the cost for operations. So we don't take aquatics decisions lightly ever for any communities. And then growing your adult and senior programming. Okay, so looking again more, we're also talking about the future here. Providing recreation places, improvements to YMCA facility and what that partnership looks like. You've had it now for a while. What's it going to look like going into the future? Public indoor sports courts or gymnasium. Again, how that looks like with the Y versus the new Alice Hall located somewhere else most likely. Provide aquatics, again, partnership opportunity. Provide a recreation center, which also ties to a public community civic center. And what I want to say about the difference, there's a very nuanced difference in language between recreation center and public community civic center, but we don't want you to think of those as two separate buildings. Two separate buildings is never as efficient as operating one larger building. So when we think about community civic center, we think of places where people can come use the internet or they can get their social security card or they can sign up for tax help. The recreation center has more of an active recreation connotation, but you know, you think of gyms, you think of workout facilities. think of gyms, you think of workout facilities, you think of where you're going to put your 250 summer camp kids. I don't know if that makes anybody's knees weak, but public, public summer recreation programs are really very popular. But those spaces very easily can be combined because when kids are in school is where people are seeking tax help or social security help. So these are the demands that we heard for buildings and facilities, but I don't want you all to think that we're starting to talk about multiple buildings because we're not. Expanding your operations, creating a dedicated Parks and Recreation Department. That's a big move for the city and not something that we expect you to ever flip the switch on. Certainly not October 1st, 2024, but helping to support the city on what that might look like. Your Parks Maintenance Crew is doing a wonderful job with your existing parks. It is much, much different when you've got a Parks and Recreation person who are leading the overall charge and the overall vision of providing recreation services at your parks. So you've got the park part down right now, but what does it look like in the future? Additional staff to support a new facility and or programming, that's something that we will be working with the city with moving forward to make sure that as positions get creative or even contemplated, there's a whole nother end of it of, you know, yes, we've cut the ribbon, we've got a great park, we've got a great recreation center, but what are we getting ourselves into with the cost of operations and maintenance, which is really the most important thing? So we'll be supporting the city with those, those kinds of numbers now, or moving into the next phase, excuse me. Maintaining and existing and expanding on your city partnerships. Again, you've got the Y, you've got lots of opportunities with Pasco County, so helping to build on those. You don't have to be one size fits all for everyone. And then implementing new funding mechanisms such as a dedicated sales tax or user fees are a combination thereof. I don't want anybody to get, to get out and think that we're proposing a new sales tax because we're not, we're not proposing any new taxes right now. But we do want to help the city understand user fees and what's truly mission-driven as providing an overall community benefit, like an open public park versus a highly individualized benefit, which would be something along the lines of a private lesson, one-on-one type lesson. So understanding all of those impacts moving forward. So our next steps, phase two, we really are going to be looking at it in three steps. The first one is future expansion. I dare, targeting, I, sorry, targeting areas for future park development. We never identify a specific parcel because we don't want those specific parcel owner to think that all of a sudden, yay, the city's going to buy my land. But we will look at areas, general areas on the map for the city to target future park development. Or like for instance, we use the example of the Y. Can we use the grounds of the Y to activate as some outdoor public park space? Working with Pasco County to address the regional park needs and then work with the city to coordinate the start of a formal Parks Rec Department and associated programming, again, down the road. Visioning, this is developing the guiding principles. That's taking those key issues that we did to the next steps and developing, these are going to be the principles that all of the recommendations moving forward are going to fall underneath it. It's a very nice and organized way to create a vision moving forward. Those goals and objectives will also tie back to your comprehensive plan and the recreation open space element. And then looking at your general park site design guidelines, SEPTED, there's that acronym I used earlier, again, that's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, mouthful that helps create safer, more secure places. And then sustainability guidelines. So we'll look at how each one of your parks would, would go, would need improvements to meet all of those. And it ties back to the equity that I talked about earlier. You don't have to have the same amenities in every park, but you should have the same, access to the same condition amenities at each of the parks. And then finally, the capital improvement program, how much is all of this fund going to cost us? So necessary improvements to your existing parks, cost of renovating them. And then we're going to be looking at a 10-year planning horizon with short, mid, and long-term goals. We do recommend that everyone update their Parks and Recreation Master Plan every five years, an interim update, and then an overall update every 10. The beautiful thing is now that you've got your first one, your five-year update would be easier and quicker because the city already has the full inventory and GIS. If that's kept up, that really saves that, that saves that part of the process. And the five-year refresh, again, Zephyr Hills will look very different in five years. Survey the residents, see, see how you're doing, take a little test card, report card on how are we doing now and looking at some of the priorities that were identified in the 2024 master plan. Are they still a priority in 2029, 2030, moving forward for those mid and long-term recommendations? And with that, I am done talking to you. The Z venue? Yeah, yeah, yes, we, we did inventory that and that first, most certainly will be considered.
Well, we'll start phase two immediately. But what Kristin does is, I mean, she has said, their group has said, you need to replace some park facilities, some playgrounds. We can start with those.
Okay, great.
Because she doesn't, they're not concerned with where it is, they're concerned with the condition of it. So we can replace those that are at the end of their.
Those little orange bars that were below two, we need to, we can start working on those.
That is right.
Yeah, because I don't want to keep waiting for reports. I want to kind of, I want to get some shovels or, yeah, I want to spend some money on things.
And that's going to get the residents excited too.
Right.
For sure.
Right, right.
Yep.
Well, this was, you have, go ahead.
Well, my question was, the money that we have for Hercules Park, that's not included in our four million.
No.
So that's separate in the four million, we're going to use among all the parks? Okay. Bits and pieces.
But.
Yes.
We'll be more than happy to help you all identify where to spend that money.
And then we're also working on a Zephyr Hills master plan or design. I don't know if it's a master plan, but it's a design that will, some of that money will go there too. So maybe a little heavier, but, but we can say, we can do some stuff at Ellis Harrell Park, we can do some things, the Cruisin' Field that we saw up here, we can do some things at different places as well as Zephyr Park. Equipment wise, like the depot.
Did I send this to all of you? Well, I'm sending it. Where they have literally taken what was on the dashboard and rated it high priority, medium priority, or low priority, and we'll start working on those with their help.
Do me a favor, don't send it, print it.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll put it in your mailbox.
All right, thank you.
We need this tomorrow if I went through that line by law.
Right, right. But no, I saw that, you know, I mean, we know the depot needs some improvement with equipment. So those are some things we can start, we can make sure we're hitting every park with something as well as focusing right now on several parks. In my, I mean.
And we heard, Steph heard you say that all this year while we were working on that. So we made sure that those things were identified in the plan so we could start.
And it'd be good to have that priority list so we have something to go by to a good guy.
Yeah, we can start, we can look at it and kind of together work on things like, we can say, start here, start there, not us, I mean, everybody.
Right, absolutely.
Right. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No, very informative.
Very good. Very informative. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's six o'clock. Thank you all so much for having me. I appreciate it very much.
You won.
You won, Gail. What's he owe you?
Now.
It's 5:59, you really won.
Right. Do we, are we postponing the CRA and Main Street reports? Are you doing?
Yes, I will put them in your mailbox. We have the reports typed up.
Great.
We'll put them in your mailbox.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other, what's, any other items, Sam?
I don't think so.
All right. Anything from anybody else? No? All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. I can't get into my.
I could be out of there.
We're done.
I could be out of there.
Think about that. Because we would.
Do you want me to?
Okay, and, and when they talk about the officers, you know, and how we, we kind of that, your crew together.
I can talk to you sometime on certain nights.
Thank you.
Can you sit?
I don't. Ouch.
It's cities. I wanted to make sure that, I know it was important to me all, but especially you, that we had.
Thank you for the heads up on that. I had.
Okay.
Yes.
I was almost scared watching, but all right.
Okay, I'd like to call the order of the Zephyr Hills City Council Meeting of Monday, September 23rd, 2024. It is 6:07 PM. Ricardo, can I have the roll call, please? Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Lance Smith. Jody Wilkinson. Steven Spina.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. And at this time, we're going to have Pastor Fran of the Oasis Church of Zephyr Hills lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We want to begin with First Timothy 2, verse 1. I urge first then that all petitions, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live a peaceable and quiet life in godliness and holiness. Father, we thank you for today. Thank you for this council meeting. Thank you for everything that is on the agenda today. We pray for every council person, Lord, every person that is sitting in the room. We pray, Lord, that you would lead, guide, and direct everything that is in need for our city. We pray, Lord, that you would touch hearts, Lord, anything that we have need of. We thank you for making the way for us and for letting your will be done for Zephyr Hills, that your name will be glorified. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Fran. Welcome to the meeting tonight. I would like to ask everyone to silence their electronics at this time if they could. And if you wish to speak to any item that's on the agenda, there's a form to sign up and, and speak and give it to our city clerk over here, Ricardo. And at this time, we're going to take any citizen comments that are for items that are not on the agenda. So you'll have three minutes and you'll need to state your name and address for the record, please.
Vicki Wiggins, 38550 Fifth Avenue, Zephyr Hills. I just wanted to remind you that tomorrow is our Access East Pasco event on the campus of St. Leo University. It's in the Wellness Center, and that is in the second entrance. So if you're coming from Date City and you go past the main entrance, go into the second entrance, and straight back is the Wellness Center, that runs from 8:00 to 11:00 tomorrow morning. Breakfast, coffee, coffee will be there. And, and then we'll have, we'll have a panel of different folks talking, giving us updates of what's going on in East Pasco. So our panel is our elected officials, which is Commissioner Ron Oakley, Commissioner Seth Waiteman, Senator Danny Burgess, and Representative Randy Maggard, along with a few, with an update from St. Leo and from St. Leo University. So you're welcome to come.
All right, thank you, Vicki, and thank you for reminding us about that too. Are there any other citizens that want to comment on anything that is not on the agenda at this time? Okay, seeing none, then we are going to move on down to the consent agenda items. I'm sorry, we skipped over to mayor, we have the mayor first.
Yeah, and also I need to add an emergency item on here. Billy, for the state of emergency for, if we can.
If we add the emergency item to the agenda?
I'll second.
A motion to second to approve the mayor's emergency item, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so no, when do you want to put?
I can, I can update you all on the emergency item. It'd be the first reading of resolution number. It'd be the first reading of resolution number eight two nine dash two four, emergency resolution by the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, declaring a local state of emergency for potential tropical cyclone nine. Governor DeSainis signed a, declared a state of emergency for 41 counties earlier today due to, um, the tropical cyclone, which is anticipated to be a hurricane shortly. That'll be coming up the, uh, west coast of Florida. Uh, should hit somewhere between Wednesday and Thursday because he declared a local state of emergency for, including all the Pasco County. We're asking that the city council do the same, and that allows us to, um, purchase things that we may need during the emergency without the normal procurement process. Also allows for reimbursement from FEMA for certain emergency-related activities of staff.
Okay. Yeah, we'll need to address that.
I, I move we approve the, uh, emergency item, just in case.
Second.
A motion to second to approve the state of emergency, uh, resolution eight two nine dash two four. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. All right, thank you, Matt. And now we'll let the mayor take over here.
Now we have, um, I believe Nick is going to be giving us an update on the, um, Sarah Vanderburg Tennis Foundation.
Thanks. Nick Walton, uh, 2431 Mirador Lane, apartment 108, Wesley Chapel, 33544. Off, got a brief update here for you guys. I'm going to try and keep this quick and concise, but I want to thank you first for having me here. I know I missed the meeting a couple of weeks ago, but glad to be here and share these updates. Um, we've been running this, these programs for about five years now, and we've really expanded outward, but also deeper into the community. And what you see on the screen here, and this is for everyone in the audience, this is a pyramid of our programs, from the bottom where we reach the most kids, up to the top, which are more selective programs. And we're going to dig into the after-school tennis and education program in summer camps a little bit, but that's really where we're reaching the most kids, about 400 kids last year, um, here in Zephyr Hills and Dade City. The middle of the pyramid is where we start to wrap our arms around them year-round, and it's where we're starting to see some of the bigger impacts. And then the top of the pyramid, we continue to give three, uh, scholarships to Zephyr Hills graduating seniors every year. Any questions about the pyramid, feel free to jump in anytime. All right. So our largest program, our after-school tennis and education program, is eight weeks long, two days a week, for about two hours. Uh, we're targeting first through eighth graders. Uh, this year, we've expanded to include first and second graders, to get them really young. And volunteering and mentorship are a huge component of it. Um, so you can see there's a 30-minute classroom session, along with an hour outside on court, uh, doing fitness activities, tennis instruction, obviously, lots of games. We've expanded with the help of a strong board, lots of volunteers. We've expanded to 12 schools. Uh, as you can see the map there, we're keeping it close to, uh, Zephyr Hills here, right? As sort of our home base. Um, so we've only gone up to Dade City and a little bit over to San Antonio. I don't anticipate us going much wider, but we're going to try and go deeper with the students that we're, that we're reaching. So, um, one of the main components is, it takes place on the school's campus. So we bring all the equipment, all of our coaches, visit the school for every single day of program. And, uh, this year, we're slated for 14 programs in 12 schools. If y'all have the packet printed in front of you, um, feel free to browse through it. I could talk about the program all day, but pictures, you know, say a thousand words. So I'm just going to flip through these pictures to get, so you can get a visual of what it looks like at the different schools that we're at.
Nick, so when you say quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, so quarter one, you're in the, the schools that are shown there?
Yeah, this is last year's, um, this is a little bit of pictures from last year. So right now, currently, we're in Woodland and Stewart. Yep. So each year, the school, uh, the schools that we visit, the timings change, the school bus schedule changes, um, the, the dismissal time, I mean, changes, so it kind of affects us, right? We're at the mercy of the school dismissal times. So we have to stagger all these programs so our coaches can go from school to school, uh, make sure they get there on time. Uh, we continue the tradition of, uh, any student who completes 80% or more of the program gets a free racket to take home. Really nice piece there. And then we find students who return to the program, they get another racket, and they give their old racket to their sibling, right? So we're seeing a lot of that. We're start, starting to see a lot of students, uh, come back to the program, which is nice. Ambassadors are one of the most critical parts of all of our programs. These are local high school students, mainly from ZHS and Pasco High. They volunteer as junior coaches and mentors at the after-school tennis and education program. We actually teach them how to teach, teach them how to lead, um, and in return, they get free training twice a week. We got a little rivalry going, Pasco High and ZHS. Uh, when it comes tennis time, they are competing against each other, um, but ultimately working together to serve the community. So we, we do two coaches trainings per year, um, on and off court, uh, skill building. We continue our love-serving autism program that starts back up October 6th. We're looking for volunteers for this program, if anyone's interested. Uh, it's a small group of students, but a lot of them need one-on-one attention. Some of them are on the spectrum, some of them are not. It's open to anyone who's interested in coming, but looking for volunteers again. Summer rec is a, obviously, you guys are familiar with the City of Zephyr Hills Summer Rec. Great program. We decided to start pushing into that three years ago. Uh, so we brought tennis to that program twice a week. Norm's been a great partner, helping us make that happen. Uh, the first two years, we were at Stewart, um, and then this last year, we were fortunate enough to bring those kids to the SVB Tennis Center twice a week, 20 kids per day, to really give them a, a different level of experience. All right, so just narrowing down to our programs here in Zephyr Hills within city limits, we're targeting three schools, Woodland, West, and Stewart, and these are really the first schools that we partner with. Um, just to give you a cost estimate, it's about 5,500 per school, per year. Um, so over the last four years, we've invested about $66,000 into the students just right here within city limits. Does not include the high school ambassadors and their training. And then with the summer rec program, uh, over three years of partnership, two days per week for seven weeks, comes out to about $20,000. These are nice round numbers, just to make it easy. I have this slide here to show you what we've invested in the community, what we continue to do here. Seeking city support, uh, in two ways, youth sports, uh, budget grant line in the City of Zephyr Hills budget, and our Razor Racket fundraising event coming up. So y'all have been amazing at attending the Razor Racket in the past years. For anyone who hasn't attended, and that includes everyone behind me, I want to encourage you to come out and check it out. It's an amazing event. It's really a big part of how we make all these programs free. Um, but as we grow, as we expand, as we go deeper with the kids, we need to continue to fundraise in diverse ways, so. Um, so there's three things I want to leave you guys with. One, our programs have been and will always be free for kids, 100% free, which we're really proud of. Two, it's not about producing tennis players. It's about all students having personal growth and positive relationships through tennis. And three, um, look, we're not going anywhere. This is where Sarah lives in all of our hearts and where we're going to continue to invest. So anything you guys can do, we appreciate, and thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nick, and sorry, our schedules didn't work out there a couple of weeks ago trying to get together, but we'll, we'll still do that. Um, does anybody have any questions?
I do. I, um, I, I've talked, and I talked to the city manager a little bit. I would like to see us contribute probably between 12 and 15,000 dollars to three schools in Zephyr Hills, West, Woodland, and, uh, Stewart High Middle School. And I talked to the city manager, and he has found some funding that I think he can make that work. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, so currently, um, looking at the, um, the line that, that Nick mentioned, the youth sports grants, uh, there's currently 4,500 dollars still available in that account. Um, and then there are, there's other lines in the administration, uh, budget that have not been fully expended. Um, so for this year, I would pull it out, you know, whatever the dollar amount is that council decides. We can pull out before October 1st, and then it'll come out of the current fiscal year's budget. Um, we didn't budget any dollars for next year, um, but I would foresee roughly 4,500 dollars being available next year in that sports grant. But again, we can have that conversation a few months down the road. Uh, but funding currently, there is dollars that can be, um, found in the admin budget.
I agree.
Oh, what, did you say how much money we had for this year?
Currently, in the youth sports, um, community youth sports line item, we have 4,500. There are other dollars that are available, um, salaries that we can move.
Could you find another 10,000 then, and make it 14, five? Yeah.
Yes, we could.
Five each, a little under five each.
We can, we find that.
Amazing, thank you.
All right, I make them, well, do you need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, yes, please.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we contribute 15,000 dollars, coordinated and aided with our youth league funding to the Sarah Vanderburg Foundation for use in Woodland Elementary, West Elementary, and Stewart Middle School.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to second, but, um, just to clarify, that's for this budget fiscal year before October 1st? Is what we're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
We'll need a re, I'll get with Nick, um, tonight or tomorrow. Okay. Tell you, to get from you exactly what we need. Um, I think there's, well, one key point I, I want to make, and I know council knows this. I don't see any, uh, reporters in the room, but I think it's a key, key point, is that the SVB Foundation is completely separate from the tennis center.
Absolutely.
In the sense, the donation that we're making is not going to the tennis center. It's not, you know, it doesn't benefit the tennis center in any, by any means. It supports the foundation and the mission of, um, providing mentorship to the, the youth of Zephyr Hills. Um, I personally think this is great. I think they're doing great, uh, great things. Heard nothing but compliments from all three schools on the program. Um, and I think it's key that these dollars, and Nick and I've spoken about this, these dollars stay at and support West, Woodland, and Stewart, um, because they are city funds going to city schools and city kids, so.
Mr. President, is, is there a reason why we're not at the high school?
The high school students are served through the ambassador program. Yeah, but that is a mix of students from Pasco High and Zephyr Hills, so I kind of left them out of that budget.
Okay.
Yep.
So one, one question I do have, Nick, and I'm, I'm assuming here that the, the ambassadors get volunteer hours, um, that they need as they go through school and, and need X number of hours to qualify for certain.
Yeah. A lot of them are doing bright future scholarships.
Yes.
Yep, and, uh, NJ, National Junior Honor Society.
Yep.
Yep, so there's, all those hours count.
Yep.
So Nick, I, I just wanted to commend you guys on that work. I've gotten amazing feedback from students at West Zephyr Hills Elementary, and this has been impactful for those kids, so we appreciate that. I know it's, I like, I like your modeling and how you're doing it, so we appreciate that. And thank your board from us next time you have a meeting.
I have one, two board members here.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I will pass that message, just thank you so much, yeah.
All right.
All right, guys, thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nick, and, uh, I have a motion to second for, to approve the city manager to, uh, procure the funds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right, mayor, do you have anything else, or?
No, I just want to thank Pastor Fran for being here. Appreciate you coming and appreciate you giving our prayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, uh, 12 consent agenda items. At this time, I'll turn it over to the council for approval of the 12 items, or if they wish to pull any for further discussion.
I make a motion that we pass all 12 consent agenda items.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve the 12 consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
May I just say one thing about it? I just want to point out that a number of these include, uh, beginning the process for the hotspot traffic, turn lanes and things on a variety of different streets within the city, so we're getting that started.
Thank you for bringing it in.
Right. We are on to the business items, and first one is the adoption of the final millage rate, is second reading.
The business item 3.1 is the second reading of ordinance number 1492 dash 24, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, levying the millage rate for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 for the City of Zephyr Hills.
Okay.
This is a public hearing.
Yes, and I, um, at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. Is anyone signed up to, well, I'll let Ted go ahead and just do a quick synopsis, I guess.
Yes, the ordinance you have in front of you is for a millage rate of 6.25. It's important to note that the rollback rate for the City of Zephyr Hills is calculated to be 5.552 mils, according to Florida statute 200.065. In the ordinance, we are setting the millage rate at 625, and 625 is considered a 4.9 per, 4.95% increase, according to statute 200.065. And that's the technical portion I needed to read into the record.
Okay. Uh, Ricardo, has anyone signed up to speak to this item?
No.
Anybody like to speak to this? We've had several discussions on this millage rate, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And council?
I move, we accept ordinance number 1492 dash 24, implementing our, approving our millage rate of 6.25 mils.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve ordinance number 1492 dash 24 on a second reading. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Now to the final budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, uh, item 3.2, second reading of ordinance number 1493 dash 24, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, adopting a budget for the 2024 through 2025 fiscal year. And this is a public hearing.
Okay, I will open a public hearing. And I will note that we've had, uh, several workshops and discussions on the final budget. Is anybody signed to speak to this? Okay, seeing no one. Council, I will close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we pass business item 3.2 on a second reading.
Second.
A motion to second to approve ordinance 1493 dash 24 on a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay.
Next item is business item 3.3, second reading of ordinance number 1473 dash 24, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, permitting section 57.075 of the City Code of Ordinances, establishing a new schedule of rates and charges for the use of or availability for the use of potable water, wastewater, reclaimed water, providing for repealer severability and effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay, this is also a public hearing. I'll open a public hearing at this time, and Ted has something for us?
Yes, before you, is the water rate ordinance in which the staff is seeking a 3% rate increase for this next year. Again, to remind you, the last rate increase was October 1st, 2021. We went through the pandemic, we had no rate increase. It's been three years. The staff is suggesting, and hopefully supported, that the 3% rate increase is, uh, needed in order to go ahead, keep up the cost of living and keep our water lines and sewer system up to speed. We think that, uh, we've outlined that. In front of you is the updated schedule from Exhibit A, and it notes that the rates go into place October 1st, 2024.
Okay. And again, we've had quite few, quite a bit of discussion on this item, too. Is there anyone signed up to speak to this? Anything that wants to speak to our item on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council.
Uh, Mr. President, I move we approve ordinance number 1473 dash 24, um, implementing a rate increase for utilities.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve ordinance 1473 dash 24 on a second reading. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Ted.
I could, Ted, just before you go, I forgot to mention, I thought your budget book looked really good. It was really well put together. Thank you.
I wish I could take credit, Stephen.
Well, tell Jessica. Thank you.
Thank you. Business item 3.4.
3.4 is second reading of ordinance number 1490 dash 24, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, enacting. annexing approximately one two point nine two acres, more or less into the corporate limits of the city of said city described as parcel eighteen dash twenty six dash twenty two dash zero zero one zero dash zero zero five zero zero dash four zeros in Zephyr Hills, Florida, in accordance with section one seventy one point zero four four Florida statutes, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Okay, I will, at this time, open a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, and this is the additional property that's anticipated to be used by BDUCO.
Okay. At this time, does anybody sign up to speak to this item? Again, this is the second reading, and we have, uh, had discussion on this. Does, um, anybody have anything to add before I close the public hearing?
We'd just like to note that, uh, this is not subject to the moratorium.
Correct. Correct, because it's not residential.
At this time, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council.
Make a motion that we pass ordinance number one four nine zero dash two four on the second reading.
Uh, second.
Have a motion to second to approve ordinance number one four nine zero dash two four on a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Three point five.
Three point five is second reading of ordinance number one four nine one dash two four, ordinance of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, proposing amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive planned amendment to the future land use map, changing from county IL to city IN industrial, and the zoning designation from county AC to city LI light industrial for approximately twelve point nine two acres of real property located south of Sixth Avenue, west of Chancy Road, and east of the Zephyr Hills Municipal Airport, having parcel ID eighteen twenty six twenty two zero zero one zero 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 five zero zero four zeros, providing for repealer conflict severability and effective date for the same parcel. This is a public hearing.
All right, I'll open a public hearing at this time. If anyone's signed to speak to this item? Okay, and again, this is, uh, on the same, uh, the property we just, uh, annexed there, so if council doesn't have anything else to add, I will close the public hearing. And council?
Sir, I move that we, uh, approve ordinance number one four nine one dash twenty four on a second reading.
Second that.
I'd have a motion to second to approve ordinance number one four nine one dash two four on a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Three point six.
Good evening, council members, Mayor, Rodney Corvo, Principal Planner. This is Phase Three of the Zephyr Lakes subdivision or Abbott Park. I think the overarching issue on this project is the utility pole that's located at the intersection of Kosick and Otis Allen. If you remember, a couple of years ago, you instructed the staff to put this project on hiatus until a resolution was reached. Billy has a brief resolution, and then after that, I'll go ahead and give a brief presentation of the technical review of this plat.
Um, sorry. I met with representatives from Duke, Senator Burgess's office, Representative Maggard's office, and BRW, the contractor, and Lennar onsite. The, um, the solution that is, that Lennar is working on is redesigning the road to shift to the north. Duke is requiring twenty-five foot separation from the, I guess, leading edge of the roadway and the, um, northern edge of the pole, so the road will shift. And those plans are being worked on now and will be brought back before council. There are still two remaining phases to, to be plotted, um, after this one.
Okay, just have, um, because, you know, I've been outspoken on this, uh, road issue here, seeing.
Right.
So, um, we, we've met, and we're looking at this, this first plat here.
Right.
And is our, we do have a bond in place on that, correct, to cover the cost of the road and all that?
There's a bond, um, which names the county. It's a county road, so it's bonded to the county, but I, I have verified that there is a valid bond for the construction.
Okay, like I said, we just want to make sure that it happens.
Right, and, and also, um, we had required, they're required to put in a pipe, a drainage pipe underneath Wire Road on the north, connecting the northern parcel, or the northern end of the parcel to the, um, parcel on the east side of Wire Road that has been constructed, and they're also actively digging the, the large retention pond on the north. And, and once they begin construction of the roadway, the reclaim line and the water lines will all be installed at the same time.
Right, unless anybody has anything else, I'll let Rodney continue on with this.
Can I ask a question real fast? Does the movement of the road, does that align with, I can't think of the road that goes.
Otis Allen.
Otis Allen, does it change that alignment to where it's not going to go across anymore?
Yes.
And how is that going to affect?
It will be a four-way intersection, and Otis Allen and Kosick Road will not line up. So it will be a wonky.
Yeah.
Intersection. That's not a great word. But at this time, short of spending two and a half million dollars to move the pole and other, you know, up to three poles, this is a solution that gets a connection that allows, um, you know, traffic to flow east to west. I believe, you know, in the future, Otis Allen will have to be realigned, kind of shifted to the north. But that's kind of where we are at the moment.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Will that intersection be a four-way stop or just stop sign?
Correct, yes, it will be a four-way stop.
Four-way. I'll make it a little better.
And that, and I will tell you, that was the, that was the solution, and, um, trying to get Duke to agree to is that it would be a four-way stop to try to keep it closer to the pole, but Duke is insistent that it has to be twenty-five feet away because they have an easement, uh, that they had purchased.
And we had looked into trying to do a roundabout or something there, which would have solved that offset problem completely, but it was not going to be.
Duke would not approve that either.
Right.
That's the part is, is we're working through Duke's easement. From that, from that pole south, um, well, all the way at least to Pretty Pond.
So they'd rather stop traffic and, and cause more congestion than put a roundabout? That was probably, I shouldn't ask that, but.
I don't think they care, really.
Yes.
Yes, we agree.
Okay.
You don't have to say it.
You don't have to say it.
Yeah, because, I mean, it was meant to be an extension, like kind of a collector road, I guess, that would come through from Kosick all the way over, and this kind of puts a kink in it.
Correct, so, um, Representative Maggard and Senator Burgess expressed their need for, um, the connection and a good connection for evacuation, just safety of, of residents and movement of residents, and Duke was standing their ground that the road must be twenty-five feet away from the pole, or the pole has to be moved. Yeah.
Well, it's a start.
It is a start. Yeah, that, it's not to say that, um, you know, the, the pole can't be moved in the future, and, you know, the road gets four-laned and, and the, the, is this existing pavement at the time gets reutilized and restripped, um, so we're working on a permanent solution. So at least we get the connection point to be able to have traffic flow.
But the important thing is, we have worked out a plan amongst all the entities involved, so that's the important thing, is that we've tried to get something.
Correct.
All right, Rodney, now that we, uh, cut in all your fun stuff.
Okay, no, thank you, Billy. So this subject plat has seventy-one units. There's two plats left after this. There's the one right at the northern portion of the property right, uh, by the stormwater pond here, and then one over here, which is a townhouse community, which is at the corner of Kosick and Gaul. Well, actually, it's set back, the, the first corner there, the first hundred and fifty or two hundred feet are associated with Zephyr Commons Plaza. Um, okay, so this subject plat tonight has been reviewed by the engineer record for the cost estimates for the bonding, which includes the infrastructure and the landscaping that's to be put in those adjacent roadways within that phase. It's been reviewed by the surveyor of record for compliance with state statutes, chapter one seventy-seven, for, uh, surveying and plating, and then staff has also reviewed this plat application for conformance with the underlying PUD, which was approved by this council a few, many, many years ago, and updated just a couple of years ago. Uh, and then in conclusion, um, let's see. This, I want to remind everybody, this is not subject to the moratorium on development, uh, for water, that this is all under the existing water use permit, okay? That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer anything. And also Billy's here for the roadway stuff.
All right, thank you, Rodney, and, and as the city manager kind of alluded to, this allows for some drainage things to get finished, some.
Correct, they're, they're working on.
And reclaim water line to get completed.
Yes, yes, I don't, I can't remember the pond number, but yes, the, the large pond and northern piece of the parcel, is being constructed, uh, they're working on that, and then also with the road, um, construction, there will be a reclaim line that's installed. That entire subdivision is, currently is irrigating with potable water. Once that irrigation, or excuse me, reclaim line goes in, it will be able to irrigate with reclaimed water, so we should see our pumping, uh, reduced.
Okay.
And on that point, the right-of-way use permit is all tied with the entrance at Sonnet Landing, so we should be able to get that clarified as well, because right now, if you drive by on Wire Road, there's a big reinforced concrete pipe that's there to prohibit people from entering and exiting off Wire Road, so that also will help clean up that mess as well.
Okay, yeah, and I think, uh, with those things being completed, but also, uh, just real quick, like on the road, so they're ready to go on the road too, is that correct? I mean, it's, it, it's just a matter of.
Yes.
I mean, we're not going to be waiting another two, three years from the start of the road.
We should not, no. That they're, they're.
Okay, because there are two other plats that need to be approved, correct?
Correct, they're finalizing, my understanding is they're finalizing the design because the road had to shift. Pasco County, which is the permitting agency, is in agreement with that shift. They just have to take the formal process of approving it, and then they can begin construction. I can try to get a timeline on that tomorrow.
Hey, I, I can support this particular item because of the, uh, the drainage things that we're talking about, the reclaimed water lines, but I will like to see that road, I want to see something get started on that, moving forward too.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just disappointed that we got to put a full-way stop there, because that's going to be a busy intersection. It's going to tie that area up, but I know you worked, I know you all worked hard on getting a solution, but a full-way stop, I'm not happy about, but anyway.
Um, I have some questions about the project. I, the plotted area is eighteen acres.
Correct.
And the lots will be seventy-one lots within that eighteen acres.
That's correct.
The entire subdivision, all that blue, is two hundred and thirty-five acres, is that what that means?
Correct, that's the entirety, that's correct.
Right, and that little corner up on the top there, the very top, right, I guess?
Correct, yep.
That's the retention area.
That is correct, yes.
Which.
That's part of the reti.
Right, part of it.
That's part of the retention area.
It's kind of weird to have it head of the, north of them, isn't it?
It's, it's piped, I, I don't.
Okay, all right, I mean, I don't remember all the particulars from.
Yeah, so there's a pipe that goes underneath, um, Wire Road. If you're heading north just before the bend in the road, uh, there's a pipe that connects that northern pond to the eastern pond.
Okay, and then this says there will only be three point eight dwelling units per acre?
That's correct, that's for that subject plat area right there, yes.
And twenty-five feet to, are they townhomes, or?
No, these are single-family homes.
But they're two-story homes?
Some of them will be, yes.
Okay.
It's a mixture of, uh, one-story, two-story mixture of sizes and bedrooms and.
That's a pretty low density, isn't it?
That's correct, yeah.
I mean, normally, they're, they could do six or something, right, or?
Yes.
What's, right?
I think, I think the, the reason, and Rodney, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, is of that eighteen acres, there's a big chunk of it that is pond, um, that's, that's in that plat, or in this plat, that may not have been in other plats, so the overall density of the project, I believe, is higher than the three point eight, but this specific piece, because of the pond that's there, uh, is a lower density.
And then, like I asked you earlier, the water use permit, this is included in the current, the three point three million, not the, what we were asking for a higher level?
That's correct.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I don't really. My question is, um, I just, I'm beginning to think that we need to expand our moratorium maybe to not, to even include those that are in the queue until we get the water settled. I don't know what anybody else, but, um, I just feel that we're, I, I, I just have a kind of a strange feeling that we're approving things even though we're not really where we need to be yet.
I agree on the water situation.
I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, and I know that we've been told that what's there, there is enough, but, but you're right, I mean, we're not, we don't have a final answer yet, so.
So, we're kind of just, I don't know, I feel blindfolded going into these projects.
Well, I also want to make sure that we understand that this is for final plat Phase Three, which is going, and, and for me, it's going to help get that reclaim line and some of our drainage issue, or at least for that project, which could affect other things too, to move forward, but I also don't want to move forward till I see something getting done on that road. That real, I don't want to hear just promises, I want to see dirt being moved, I want to see equipment out there, I want to see stuff being done before we move on to anything else.
I, I just have another question too, President. You know, I, I've talked about my biggest concern up in this whole area, especially when that, that top of that hill rolling down is, are we confident that there's enough water? Ponds that are going to, this is one of our lowest-lying areas, we all know this. This is the old Gor's Dairy, this is where the cows were in the water all the time. So, um, are we, we're confident that they have enough water retention and things on this plot, this area?
That's a very good question, and I'll, I'll update you that approximately a year and a half, two years ago, we walked the site and had it reviewed by BGE as an engineer of record to review the original work that was done to ensure that what you're talking about, uh, our fears were relayed, so with the buildout of it, it's our understanding that with the buildout of the stormwater ponds in these phases, then that will be complete and it'll operate as it was designed.
Okay.
Yes.
Actually, during all these storms, that area didn't flood.
I, I.
That one, we've been crossing our fingers, I drive by there all the time, yeah.
I was surprised.
I'm worried more about the underground water right now than, um, you know, the other water. I mean, we have water issues of all kinds.
We've seen Gor's Dairy underwater many, many times.
But that was one that did that, so.
There was no water. I was shocked.
All right, so you want a motion, don't you?
That's correct.
Um.
I'll make a motion that we pass business item three point six.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, motion to second to, um, did you have other comments?
I would like us to maybe put on the agenda next meeting, um, some discussion on the.
Good question.
I will ask our consultants to be here as well. See if they can be here to give us an update on our WAP permit application.
All right, so, yeah, because, yeah, I keep, this will be the one, two, three, fourth project we've approved, I think, without having this settled, and I just don't feel comfortable doing it. I feel like when I do it, I, I don't feel comfortable.
Well, this project was, was approved, um, and is inside the, yeah, inside the current WAP.
But I still feel, I mean, I, I would like to kind of talk about it more, if we could,
with the whole council.
Yeah, and the whole council might be here, so.
Yeah.
Okay, um, did you finish your motion?
Yeah, we had a motion in a second.
Did have a second, okay. Motion to second to approve business item three point six, which is a final plat Phase Three of Abbott Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, council mayor, and the Mylar after the meeting with the subdivider agreement, Ricardo has it for your signature. Thank you.
Thanks, Rodney.
Thank you, Rodney, and now we're on to the city attorney report.
I have one business item. It is 4.1, first reading of ordinance number 1494-24, ordinance of the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, creating section 130.24, smoking prohibited in city parks and vaping prohibited in or on city property, establishing prohibited conduct, definitions and penalties, providing for repeal or codification severability and effective date.
Is this a public hearing too?
It's not a public-
Not a public hearing, okay. This is the first reading, so open for discussion at this time, the council.
I'm guessing, I'm going to ask the city manager a couple of questions. I'm guessing that you're going to put signage in the parks saying no smoking within this-
Yes, sir.
Park.
Yep.
And there'll be a couple of them around different places.
Yes.
There needs to be at least one in each-
What happens if Madeline calls in and says, "I'm at a picnic table and the guy next to me's smoking." What do we do?
Respond to them and tell them they have to-
Put it out.
Yeah, they're not allowed to smoke in the park.
Provides for code violation.
Yeah. On, on the code enforcement or on the police?
Either or. It's one of those, I think, police would have authority and be able to write, and so would code enforcement.
Yeah, I, I like it, I think it's a good idea, but I'm wondering if, how we're going to kind of enforce it if it gets to be a big deal.
And I'll, I agree. To put this into, into action, then we need to, if we're going to do this, then we need to make sure that there's, that something's going to happen if you get caught doing it there. So do we need to revisit and do like a-
See what happens.
I was just saying-
There's a citation process, find them out and then, you know, your second or more violations to find doubles, I mean, there's enforceability to it. You know, I guess it's just up to manpower and, and how big of an issue it is on how often we enforce it, but, you know, I think it'll be complaint driven.
Well, yeah, and I think, you know, you're going to get most of it applied to be weekends and after-hours type things, so probably going to be more police and it would be code enforcement, I would imagine.
I think we'll do a, we'll do an advertisement campaign where the PIOs sends out, kind of flood the, the market, right, with notices and just the acceptance of the, of the ordinance. And then at that point, it becomes a tool in the tool belt of both officers and code enforcement to enforce, you know, kind of like a speed limit, you know, if you're speeding and you don't get caught, you got lucky that day. You know, same with, if you're smoking, you're walking through the park, chances are nothing, nothing happens to you. But if a police officer, code enforcement officer sees you, there's a reason for a, for an interaction at that point, so.
And I think you're right, I think, and, you know, just to advertise what's going, happening first will be a big first step, and then, you know, because there's a lot of towns on the beaches where they're doing this on open beaches, which I really appreciate that stuff, and I think most people do, so just being an education process in the beginning, and then at some point, you know, there's going to be some consequences, as simple as that.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, these are our parks where we're supposed to be out there for health reasons and, yeah, enjoying the fresh air. And I appreciate this ordinance very much so, that we can maybe, but maybe we need to figure out, so when, if we do as council get calls, how, how do you want us, who do you want us to call? So maybe we just need to kind of have you ponder that and think about that of how do, how do we direct?
And what brought this about was that presentation we got from that one group, and I can't remember, was a swap or something like that?
Yep.
And they may actually have some, they may have some ideas on, you know, how to proceed with this too, so. I'm sure they did, I'm sure they did all their research, so.
Yeah.
And see what other municipalities have done and so forth.
Mayor, to answer your question, I would always prefer that the mayor and council go to the city manager or to me with any, any issues and then let that go to staff from there. I just think that's a better procedure for, for any issue.
Move that we accept, approve the first reading of ordinance number 1494-24 regarding smoking in the park.
Second.
Motion to second to approve ordinance number 1494-24 on the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Matt. Onto the city manager.
Yes, item 5.1. Two of the four lift stations that were constructed in Hidden River subdivision were not built to city specs, therefore they were deeded to the HOA. So the home builder deeded those two stations to the HOA. HOA has requested, requested for a couple of years for the city to take ownership of the stations. After much discussion, JJ's persistence, the city has agreed to upgrade the stations and take ownership. In exchange, HOA will pay $150,000 of the $310,000 cost to convert the stations. Attached, or you have in front of you to this item is the several agreements that need to be executed between the city and the Hidden River HOA. And what the, what those agreements say is that the city will pay the cost for conversion, the HOA will repay $150,000 over a 10-year period or sooner if they choose, and the HOA will survey indeed the needed property to the city for the lift stations. Any questions? With that, staff recommends approval of agreement 41-2423.
I guess I do have a question. So over the period of time, will we improve the, the level or make them more suitable to our needs, or we can just operate them as they are?
So we're going to spend the, the $310,000, we'll upgrade them?
That'll, that's the cost.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Basically, they're replacing half.
Correct.
So they're paying for half of it.
They're paying for half of it, yes.
And, and the cost that, of that 310, is that, is that strictly for the, for the lift station and, you know, some of the other, I'm going to call them amenity items that, that we were, you know, discussion about, let's, we could remove some, some of those things and-
So we've massaged them. They don't meet the full specification of our stations, but, you know, includes fencing, putting in the same type of motors, those types of things.
I think the operational part is what is most important, for sure.
Right.
Okay, so we are approving this agreement, and does that cover all five of those items? Under 5.1?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right.
Make a motion that we pass item 5.1 on the, is, is this the only reading?
Right, yes, sir.
Second.
Motion to second to-
I have a motion to second to approve business item 5.1, which is the agreement 41-24-23 with Hidden River Homeowners Association. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, item 5.2, this is the task order for $310,000, nine, $310,958.26 to convert the two private lift stations to city standards. This one had to go second because if you didn't approve the agreement with HOA, there's no sense in approving the task order. So this is a task order that's associated with the improvements.
I move that we approve item 5.2, approval of the task order with RCM for the lift station improvements at Hidden River.
Second.
I have motion second to approve business item 5.2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. 5.3.
Item 5.3, interlocal agreement 41-24-24 for joint planning area with Pasco County. The agreement replaces paragraph nine pertaining to transportation impacts of an existing interlocal agreement addressing the annexations, rezonings and complaint amendments and other planning matters that was, was entered into in 2009 by the county and the city. The proposed agreement specifically addresses transportation capacity impacts caused by development in the Zephyr Hills area and identifies a list of qualifying joint projects to be funded by both parties. It actually, the exhibit actually lays out DOT projects as well, or funded projects. The agreement allows for the joint projects to be listed and modified on an as-needed basis without need to amend the agreement. The agreement requires the city hold 90% of its new fare, the new transportation impact fee dollars to be used for the joint projects. Interconnectivity of streets, sidewalks, trails, county right-of-lease permits will be required for any projects in the city that have direct connections to the, to the county roadway, which we currently do. The current agreement, we were required to hold 90% of any impact fees or transportation impact fees that are collected on big box or PUD zone properties. This does change to where it's 90% of all projects. The current agreement requires us to hold that 90% of funds in a separate account. They've removed that language. With the attached agreement, excuse me, the attached exhibit, you can see the projects that we have listed there. Pretty Pond Wire, Greenslip Dottry, 301 Dottry, Island Four King, 301 Wire, 301 Geiger, Fifth Ave, County Road 54, Court Street, 39 Chancy, Copeland, Chancy, Wire Three, or excuse me, hold there. Those sound familiar to you? Those are the hotspots.
Right, those, those were what we approved for the engineering in the consent agenda.
Correct.
I just have a question, if I may, about the 90%, that's not 90% of all our impact fee collections.
Transportation impact fees.
I mean, yeah, transportation.
It's 90% of all of those, and it's to go towards joint projects. So we could say we want to put, I don't know, sidewalks in along 54, and we would talk to the county about it and they would agree to it, and it would go in there. So it doesn't have to be specific to county, county roads or county projects.
But it's not as bad as it sounds because most of the, the impact fee money can't go on most city streets anyway.
Correct.
So it has to be that level of service, I mean, that level of road collector or something.
Correct, yeah, to increase the capacity, correct.
So it sounds like they're tying our hands, but they're not really.
Right, yeah. Where I feel comfortable is that we can up, amend the exhibit A or the joint projects list at any time, so we can pick up the phone, send an email and have a conversation about changing these projects. And if something comes up, we can rearrange them, add them, delete them.
And Steve, thanks for bringing that up for, as a clarification, because it does sound-
At first I was thinking, wow, that mean, but then I realized, those are the level roads that-
Correct.
Those fees can only be spent on anyway.
Right, yep.
Any other questions?
Oh, I move that we approve it.
5.3?
5, I move we approve the interlocal agreement for the joint planning area.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve the interlocal agreement for joint planning area 41-24-24. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. All right, do you have anything else?
There's an-
Nothing else.
That's noted, okay, never mind.
Okay, we have come to the point in the meeting for the mega announcements.
Billy, do we have updates on the WUP at all? I, I wasn't here at our last meeting, where are we at with that?
So there were three, three conditions that were submitted by SWIFTMUD. We met with, I say we, John and I met with our consultants last Thursday, Thursday, drafted a response language, and that was submitted back to SWIFTMUD today, yes, Friday. It was submitted Friday, so we're in the final stages. I'll let, I'll ask Jones Edmonds and Michelle Hayes to come and explain it, what those conditions are. The way I read it, we asked for 4.49 MGD. SWIFTMUD has granted 4.136, I think it is. But if we meet certain conditions, we can get the number up to 4.49. So we're trying to get some clarification and proposing some additional language, but I'll ask the group to come in and give a better explanation than I did.
Good, all right. And then we have the Zephyr Hills Economic Summit coming up next month, and I was hoping that we could do a, have Kevin do next week maybe a blast out about that. It's on the 9th of October from 8:00 to 12:00 here at City Hall, and we are going to be talking 100% about transportation in the city, county and state levels. So is that a possibility?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I believe that you guys have a flyer, but if not, I have one. Okay, or you can get one from Vicki, but I just, transportation continues to be a hot button issue in our city, hence why we're pushing to maybe educate our citizens a little bit more on what are city roads, what are county roads, what are state roads, how they're funded, how we prioritize, how they prioritize. So I'm, you know, I'm hoping that we can get this room filled with our citizens that are the most vocal. So that's, if everybody can help us with that, that would be, would be great. So, thank you. That's all I have.
City manager.
We're going to talk about the access East Pasco tomorrow. I did speak to SWIFTMUD today regarding water concerns, the above-ground water concerns and the pending storm that's coming. SWIFTMUD surveyed the Zephyr Creek from Zephyr Park South to 301. I asked them if they could survey the conveyance system from Silver Oaks to Zephyr Park. Between my request and Friday, Pasco County came out and they used a menzy muck, looks like a little spider monkey thing, I don't know, and went out and cleaned a lot of grass out of the conveyance system. And so the water is flowing pretty good now, but SWIFTMUD will come back out, they're going to plan on being out tomorrow morning to kind of look at the conveyance system, make sure there aren't, there are not any blockages. Pasco County also asked them to look at the Ramblewood area, which has experienced some flooding, again, outside of city jurisdiction, and also asked them to look at the system just south of 301, kind of where it empties into the pond and then goes to, to the Hillsborough River. So they're working on that, they're also working on lowering the Hillsborough or allowing it more of a discharge to try, try to create some capacity for the impending storm. We, as a staff, Public Works Department did a great job of pumping down Ninth Avenue, that has been pumped down, it's within the, the banks of the pond. Pumping has been suspended because of the storm. The two ponds at 20th Street are not perking as fast as we typically see them perk, I think just because of how much water we've put into them. So we stopped pumping on Friday, allow it to perk through the rest of the week, and we'll see where we are on that. Each of you received an email, Zephyr Hills News has closed their doors. We've worked on getting a, all the hard copies to be able to store at the library, so we'll continue those conversations and bring them back before council at the appropriate time. And then just a reminder that we need to do a, a quick shade meeting following the conclusion of council. That's all I have.
All right, city attorney.
I'm actually going to ask the council recall business item 3.3. There was some confusion back and forth about two different ordinances that were floating around, and I just believe that the one on the agenda on this packet is different from the actual one that was prepared in the heading, so I'd like to reread it and have you read, take a vote on it.
So you're going to, do we need to resend the- So, you're going to, do we need to rescind the, the vote?
I would, I would rescind the vote on 3.3 and take a revote once I re-read it again.
Okay, so, I'll need a motion to rescind the vote on business item 3.3 for further clarification, I guess.
I move that we rescind the vote on item 3.3.
Second.
I have a motion to second to rescind the previous vote on business item 3.3. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously, and now let the city attorney read into the record.
Second reading of ordinance number 1473-24, ordinance of the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, creating section 51.23 of the city code of ordinances, establishing a new schedule of rates and charges for the use and availability for the use of potable water, wastewater, and reclaimed water, providing for repeal or severability and an effective date. And this is a public hearing. I would ask that you reopen a public hearing.
I'm going to open a public hearing. And is there anybody at which to speak to this item, business item 3.3? All right.
I'm going back to, just to see what was there, because we were handed out a new exhibit A. Are you talking about exhibit A that was different, or?
The exhibit A that was handed out is correct and is the same as what I just read.
Right.
There's just a different number listed in the heading that was printed on this agenda versus what's on the actual ordinance.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, I just wanted to make sure that the correct one was read into the record.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel?
I move that we approve item 3.3, reclaim water, sewer, and potable water rate, second reading of ordinance number 1473-24.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve business item 3.3 as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you for that clarification there too. If you have anything else as an announcement?
I have nothing else.
Okay, all right, city council, we'll start down here with Steve.
Okay, I would just like to begin with, you know, the, I, I, I just want to compliment really the city manager for a lot of the work he's done with the above-ground water issues that we've had. He has worked diligently with the state emergency management department, with Pasco County, with residents, with neighborhoods, with council members, and I, I think they've done a very good job. The water has, I, I did receive a call thanking us for what you did on Ninth Avenue, which I told you about, and the water in Silver Oaks is down substantially from the homes. I, I mean, it's still in the golf course, but it's still down substantially from the homes, the areas that, around what was like the first and seventh holes. So, that looks good now. Who knows what Thursday will bring, but.
Hopefully, little rain.
I appreciate your efforts and your.
It does.
Thank you. I haven't done a whole lot. It's been Public Works and, and Pasco County Emergency Management.
You, and you coordinate your staff. So, I mean, the calls went to you and then you, you directed them, so thank you and to the staff and to the county and to the state. Yes, that's all I have.
I would like to thank SVB Tennis Center for what you do for our community, for our children, and in our schools. And I also want to thank Ted and his crew for this great budget. It, you know, it, it was, it's a lot of work, and it's the one thing I do not look forward to as a council person, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, and just to follow up on all that, you know, this is a busy time of the year for us with the budget going on, and then, of course, all hands on deck with the the stormwater issues we've had, and hopefully this week doesn't bring a, a hur, another Hurricane Debbie and we should be doing, but thanks everyone for all their work on all that they do, and that's all I have. Meeting adjourned.
But I think it's almost like the next day you're just perfectly.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this, that's the nature.